The TC Freeze, located in Monazuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloins, famous homemade pony sauce, and don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten-thirty to nine-thirty. To place an order, call 765-245-2887. We appreciate your business.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'll say a couple things. It's been brought to my attention that the side bars that we have are distracting. Some of the members can't hear, even meet. So I'd kind of like to keep those to a minimum if we can. Another thing is the public. There's a time for public comments. If we direct something at you, I mean, you're more welcome to answer. If you have a question or whatever, I mean, you can raise your hand or whatever. But we'd rather not have any outbursts if we can, please. Everybody agree to that?
Okay.
Sure.
All right, well, we're gonna open a public hearing on our... Yeah. Cindy will take care of what is...
So we're starting tonight with our public meeting session for the Town of Rockville to apply to the Office of Community and Rural Affairs for their comprehensive plan. So this is, you've heard me say this before, we're working hard to get some approvals on this. So this may sound repetitive if you think, oh, we've already done this. Well, we didn't get awarded last time, so we're working again. But this would be a grant for fifty thousand dollars. And the project cost is sixty thousand, so that would fit two thousand for the town to match. A comprehensive plan, I don't know if you were around here, but in 2015, we got this really nice comprehensive plan that several things have been completed in. It's getting a little outdated just based on the date that it was created, so we would like to update this. Can you think about what is included in comprehensive plans? It could be transportation, mobility, it could be housing, land use, parks, the economy, the health, the environment of your community. It can cover a ton of things, so it's based on what's important to you. We are going to launch a resident survey. Brandy's gonna be putting a URL on the utility bills, right, Brandy?
If we can get, I don't think we were able to get it on there this time, but if we can, then we will. If not, we'll make sure that we advertise that, we'll post it here, and we have it for public knowledge.
So it'll get either out through social media or on the printed bills. It's a really short survey. If you're unable to do those things online, Brandy will in the next few days have hard copies available up front for folks. So we'll likely run that for about three or four weeks. We give everybody an opportunity to respond to that. The grant period, so it actually opens up on... Yeah, April fifteenth. Sorry, I had a lot of dates here. And our application will be due on May seventeenth. And then the announcements would occur on June twentieth. So that's kind of the date period that we're working with for this specific grant. So this is an opportunity for you to ask questions, provide comments. Brandy is taking minutes for this meeting so that we can provide that along with our grant. And thank you for signing that additional sign-in sheet that we will put with us as well. The floor is yours. I'll let Dave direct traffic if we have lots of hands.
Yeah, there's great questions. Any comments? Nobody?
Do you think it's a good thing? I mean, do you...
It's a wonderful thing.
Care? That's the point.
It really is useful, so if you have any comments or, you know, we'd love to have participation in it, so...
Do you have the QR code already made?
Brandy has it.
If you can get that to me, I'll put it in the video.
We'll see if we can get it to you, John. So this will cover things, not just utility things, which is what we tend, I think, to talk about a lot here, and parks, but just opportunities that you see for development in the community.
Do you need letters?
Letters would be helpful. Letters of support. Letters of support from residents are definitely impactful. If you are someone that likes the mobility or the walkability of your community and you know there's areas for improvement, to places that you would like to go, letters from you would be helpful in that respect. If it's... You tend to talk quite a bit about some properties that require cleanup. If that is something you're passionate about, give us a letter about that. Like, do we want to see this address in the conference? So there's nothing that's out of bounds in discussion, other than... I mean, there's specific funding for specific things, like roads. But if you feel that streets are important in your community and you want them better, you can talk about that. And then right now, there's a lot torn up, so that would be a hard discussion.
Would pictures be helpful also?
Not necessarily pictures unless... If you... I guess that they would be specific instances, so like talking about the walkability. So if I can walk from my house to the IGA, but there's a section of a road that doesn't have any kind of sidewalk or safe walking path, that kind of picture would be good to describe what the barriers are.
We talked about mobility last time. And my hope is to be able to maybe produce a couple of those letters that we weren't able to get last time about some mobility options for residents that maybe don't have a vehicle that drive or can't drive or walk for that matter. So I'm hoping to maybe get one or two from those residents this time that we can support the fact that the sidewalks are important.
I mean, and it could be tourism-related. It could be, you know, when we have festivals, we lack this, or we could be better at this. I mean, there's a broad range of things that can be discussed in the comprehensive plan.
I have a question. Well, how about Thirty-Sixth through Town, Ohio Street, I believe it's called in Rock? But, you know, it's never been, it hasn't been a rebuild on that by NDOT in my lifetime. Must have happened in very early years. You know, we did Forty-One twenty years ago. Could that, should that be part of a comp plan in pursuit of that? At my understanding, you have to really work with the state NDOT and perhaps other officials to get that done. But it seems like it's high time that was done, because those sidewalks along... Speak of walkability, it's more tripability on Thirty-Sixth. Especially like from the depot up to Town and then on down to the intersection, and then that connects on down to the northern...
And you've got your bike and ped plan that could complement what...
But that, that's a section of streets. And we've addressed a lot of streets in the last ten years, but that's one that just is, it needs to be done.
Yeah, I could say that could be in your comp plan because that is an issue or a barrier, you know, through tourism, through walkability, just the aesthetics of your community. So a comprehensive plan, you're going to be identifying projects that are meaningful to the community. So that could be a meaningful project. The comp plan is not going to solve it, it's going to help identify it and work through how you would address those.
About a decade ago, we had a comp plan, and it laid out quite a few things. Some of those things are addressed somewhat. So is it, I missed it in the first one. So do we need to go back and account for those things and what's changed? And why we've not addressed those? Or do we just say, these are our current needs, and take it from there?
So the firm, because the grant process is a little different. We have to find the firm and get a bid from them, and then we go after the grant. So in this instance, the same firm that did the 2015 plan will be doing the new plan for awarded the grant. So I think in that instance, they're likely going to go back to this and say, what's still relevant is the first exercise maybe for the working group? And what they still makes sense to keep in there, and then what's changed? So I assume that they would create that as part of the exercise.
I didn't know that. To get the grant, though, if we didn't do some of those things, I mean, you know, I mean, the comp plan is never gonna get them all done. But the most key things, do you need to highlight your successes? Or does it not really matter?
Yeah, in the, in the writing of the grant that we've applied and have been turned down twice, in both instances, it's for, the biggest part of that was lacking community input. Kind of like what's happening in our conversation right now. There's just, it's hard for people to think about all of this stuff. But we're doing a survey this time, which we have not done in the past. So we're trying to solicit more of the public input. Those things are going to help us score better than rehashing what we didn't do. Just based on their feedback on our past applications.
I have a question. You have all these different studies and plans, bike and ped plan, master comp plan, different studies. How is it, how do we make sure that these different plans don't conflict with each other in different areas?
Well, traditionally, they're gonna cover different topics. So if you're talking about a bike and pedestrian plan, it's gonna be bike and pedestrian plan.
Not specific conflicts, but more of urgent goal conflicts, I guess. And maybe it doesn't happen in some...
Yeah, I've not seen that necessarily happen, but that is where... So we already have the bike and pedestrian plan as an example. So we took the approach to make that complementary component of a new comprehensive plan. So either committee members or consulting firms or however, we want to make sure that that information carries over, so it doesn't conflict.
So every plan or study is subordinate of one above it, kind of, you know, sort of like...
It can be, just depending. So if we already have a study done, we want to make sure we bring that to the table as you're creating a new one. And then that way, we avoid overlapping and conflicts and things like that. Okay, I think, I think I'm right?
Cindy, one more thing.
Oh, yes.
On the questioning in the survey, I mean, how do you weed out the obvious? Everybody, ninety-five percent of people say, roads, sidewalks. I mean, it's gonna be stuff we're already trying to address, or the town council trying to address, and very supports. So how do you get past that blockability for facility, for whatever, and not to have three hundred responses, we need the roads fixed?
Yeah, so in writing this grant for the comp plan, if I get three hundred responses to say roads, I'm gonna have to say roads is the priority. What happens then when you get the working group, so you have to try to implement what your plan says? Then it's like, okay, if Thirty-Sixth was the issue, then, okay, you folks, go talk to NDOT. If it's sidewalks, we have a sidewalk group here. Here's what the public's saying. So it gets separated as you filter it down, but as a general thing, just in me talking about what the community wants to see, they want to be working sidewalks.
And the fifty thousand dollar grant goes to what, just the plan itself?
Is the plan, yes.
And it does help us for future grants and everything else, so it'd be nice to get public involved as much as we can.
Yeah, we get to reference this a lot. So as an example, if you're doing water sewer, if that came up in your plan, in your comprehensive plan, we can always refer back to that and say, we've already received public info that says this. So we get to go back and use a comp thing quite often. And it's helpful when it's up to date.
So is it, is it more difficult to get people to be more specific about what they want? Are we, are residents just generalizing and not specific enough? Or...
I would say we typically receive no comment, whether it be general or specific. And I think that, and not just the Town of Rockville, but we have that issue across the county in many meetings like this that I participate in, where, I don't know if sometimes the public's not comfortable expressing, and so we always give them the option to provide something in writing if that's easier for them. If it's something they haven't really thought about, or that they feel like maybe sometimes what they're stating is the obvious, or maybe it's a random thing. But we're open to hearing everything. We just need to hear from the public. Because these guys are here representing you, so they need to know what you think. I'm just writing an application, putting it together as somebody else.
Well, if nobody else wants to talk truthfully, at College and Thirty-Sixth, the trees are so overgrown, you can't drive out of there safely without, not about getting hit. And the sidewalks are so torn up, you can't walk down without tripping, and it's not IGA compliant. And that is the biggest complaint I hear from people that drive on College.
So Brandy's putting that in, and I know that some will be deflected.
Sounds like a letter to me, yeah?
I mean, a letter from your police department is fine.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That's your assignment.
You could put in an email to Brandy or myself. I mean, if you don't want to do it from a letter, and they'll accept just about anything. The only thing that didn't work good when we did the sewer one is a lady kindly took a video of her toilet kind of exploding with water. But we couldn't submit a video, so we had to try to get still picture of water shooting.
Some of the things, you know, it sounds like you need stuff tonight to make this a more...
Well, I mean, we have until May seventeenth to submit, but...
Things like, you know, by being on storm board and seeing some of the seeroscopies that we've done over the years. I mean, some of it's already out, out there, but I mean, we have that kind of information. We assume you would like that to be a formal letter. One more, I mean, from storm board, we can say, look, you know, the sewers, we need a sequential prioritized plan of how to deal with these problems. Because it also interferes our, we get into it because it interferes with the storm drainage, where people think that storm drainage is a sewer problem. Unfortunately, sometimes they're interconnected, but there's, you know, so... I mean, we have videos of that, and we know places where there's problems. So do you need that specific stuff in the comp plan too?
I don't need the, the specific in video of what's happening for the application for the comprehensive plan. It's like, okay, we know we have overlapping utilities and we need a plan. So that would be the statement of what we want to see in the comp plan, that we do that exercise.
So like the bike and ped plan, when you look at it, it shows, you know, the total percentage of households that have access where they can walk down and walk down the street to the school, to the park, you know, like the break to the park. You know, if you're a kid and you're walking from college and making it across Thirty-Sixth, and then you come to the dog park, and you gotta walk out in the street and walk on down. You know, where we didn't connect things, even though there's people at risk. So, I mean, do they need those specific examples? They just say, look, we need better connectivity and better sidewalks to allow free movement of our, of our vulnerable population in the public light.
Yeah, and I think they could, I think you could do both. So you could generalize walkability, and then as a specific example, there's X percent of our community that can have safe walkin' paths at the park, or... It doesn't hurt to provide data in there. And these letters of support, it's hard to include video. Pictures are tough when it comes to water and sewer issues. I mean, you could have pictures of ponding water and things like that. But when you're, when you're looking at this either from, say, a stormwater board or a resident, this is a known issue. I want to ensure that this is being addressed through our comprehensive plan by support doing this project. You could be, you know, that general, or you could say, or as a very specific example.
Any other questions, comments?
So I would just say, as a deadline, if you would like to submit something, please have it in by May first, so that we can hold that into our application, please.
All right, well, thank you, Cindy. We'll close the public hearing if there's no other comments, so... Mr. Larson, are you, are you prepared?
He's not here.
He's not here. He's not here. He didn't show up. He said he was coming, but he's not here.
So do we have his name?
I do not, no. I just know Mr. Larson requested to be put on the agenda before five o'clock to talk to the council about some property issues.
I talked to them today. They came by my office. I think we have, there is ordinance violation issue, but we may have it resolved. They're gonna talk to Bill.
Okay. So we can move on from here?
Yeah.
You ready, Brandy?
Yeah. I haven't ended the month in claims, and then our first per April. My claim totals are two different ones. I have a total of six fifty-five, one eleven forty-one. And I have a claim total for thirty-seven, three eighty-seven oh eight for Fertile.
I'll move.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a small claim adjustment, and they were just for some credit card penalties. So it's actually a negative three eighty-twelve for those.
No, for, make a motion.
Fall in favor?
Minutes I've sent out, I have copies of minutes for the March eighteenth, March fourth. We got February nineteenth and February fifth all in there.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
And then just one other thing, I just set a meeting I want you all to be aware of. I'll be sending a meeting notice out on it, but I did a call from the contractor for the Anderson Howard Walton, and they would like to do a pre-con meeting April tenth at nine AM. That will also include Luke. Like I said, I just took that phone call late today, but we wanted to go ahead and get started on that. And I told him that he will work with you and Doug on property or utility relocations. But as far as the meeting, I would set that meeting for that day. So just look for an notice of meeting for that tomorrow.
That's Wednesday, Wednesday, September.
Is that all you got, Brandy?
Yes, thank you.
Doug, or Bill, you ready?
I've given each of you a copy of the nuisance property and budget. I'll also send those out, I mean, if you guys have any questions over those reports.
No, budget looks pretty good, Bill. You guys are staying within budget for first quarter. Way under our fuel, that, that's good.
And that's, that's all I had, just the budget report. And to show you, we started writing down yard just for the comp plans with the ordinances. And we have two that are pending, one that's been dismissed because they became compliant and they've had a judgment on them.
Well, any comments or questions for Bill? Thank you.
Brandy, are we missing two meetings? Oh, did I miss them?
Yes.
Dave? You ready?
Yep. I don't have a whole lot here, so let you know that summer help has started. Rodney and Pam are back, started today. So that'll, a lot of the guys from the Moons already started. Restrooms are open, both the depot and the park. They're hanging. Jared, which is one of our linemen, or prince linemen, he is off the stool this week for climbing and a little bit more technical work on the pole, so he'll be gone all week. Like, I probably dig at all the lights at the park, all but one, they're gonna try and get to it tomorrow. And then the other is just the market street. They've made it up to here, the High Street, now they're going back and doing the tie-ins to the storm drain and hopefully have the lift station up and running, or ready to run by the end of the week. Storm drain is on hold on Middle Street, I'm now waiting on that part. I did go over today, they're not there. And then the water project is moving right along. Luke and I, Luke from DS, and Kobe have really been working hard on trying to stay with the budget, with the money, and, and there's been a lot of changes, valves that we didn't do, and went to other areas that did, that are. But other than that, I think we're doing real good.
Say, the, the original BR outlined a lot of items that, kind of the previous administration had told us, we included them, we got up to them, we turned them, they operated perfectly fine. We didn't feel the need to replace something, it was perfectly fine. Everything's in, we've spent a fair amount of money. I ran the numbers this weekend, I believe we're three hundred thousand dollars under our cost at the moment, which is great. Obviously, if you replace, you know, twenty instead of thirty, you're gonna come in cheaper. We just didn't feel the need to replace items, we're still working. Like Doug said, as we've been going, you know, Tony goes to shut off a valve, isolate an area. He snaps a valve, obviously, we need to replace that. So we've added some additional items, but as far as I can tell, we were roughly three hundred thousand dollars under budget.
And of course, we'll use that there on West Ohio, there.
Well, yeah, we have that. On East Ohio, you mean, down there where we had to move the water line to comply with...
Well, yeah, but like here on West Ohio, all them water meters that need changed, they're all bell setters.
Oh, okay.
With the money we have a little bit, and trying to stay on it, our plan is, is when we get to that point, if it's a galvanized line, I've asked Boyer and Nam, the money's there, to go ahead and go to the main input, pets or PVC. So we, because it's galvanized, Dave, you know, as soon as we turn it off and back on, we're gonna be back here in a year, probably.
So that, that's on, on the actual, in it, right?
That's all, that's all actually up here on the water meters going to homes. A lot of them are bell setters on this side of town.
Oh, okay.
That are there to be changed, and just the water line supply, the tap. So I've asked Boyer and Luke to stay on top of that, so we can, if it's galvanized, we're gonna go ahead and change it, and the money should be there without. That's just some of the changes.
Okay.
And things that we've been able to save by not doing something we shouldn't be doing. And then we're also gonna be able to pick up, I believe, over on Rockville, Rogers, a twelve-inch valve that does not work and was not in the project. We're gonna be able to squeeze that into the project too, and get that.
Well, yeah, well, we had a twelve-inch valve for...
In front of your house that ended up being a four.
Yeah, and it was, it was actually a six, I think.
So we do have that valve already purchased, already in it. So it'll just be now going over there to do that. So we're definitely making great changes in it and staying with the budget, so... And it's gonna be, at the end of the project, it'll be even better than we expected, so... And they are about a week, a week and a half out of all the valves and fire hydrants throughout the town. If everything works out all right, Kobe should have that done. And then Chase has already got down from the plant to Ohio Street, and then down to Erie with the main of getting it bored in. Of course, they have to come back with all the taps, but they're moving right along on it. So it's, it's, it's doing really good right now. Everything's working out.
Well, it's exciting.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's, they're great to work with. Fantastic, really. They're constantly keeping us informed of what's going on and everything, so pleased about that. All right, and that, that's all. that. Um, other than that, that's all, you know, daily operations going, moments picked up and everything. So.
I have a question. I was just gonna ask about, um, timeline, how it's looking.
Timeline, I think we're ahead of schedule actually.
So potentially before the end of August?
Don't see a world in which we're not.
Well, it's not just, I mean, they're.
Weather holds and all.
The weather stays. Uh, they work through some rain, so that's not, you know, this is just a downpour. So I really don't, let's let the drastic happen. I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, I was gonna get to, uh, Kevin.
Yes, I did. I spoke to him today. I'll be touching base. I'll be with him tomorrow afternoon at the end of exactly what we're gonna have.
When I had talked to the road crew, it said that, that the sewer line that's crossing the road was actually tiled there. And, uh, and we had actually, uh, rotor rooted, uh, over to the property line, previous, the previous owner of property did. And, uh, this, and I had a camera go through and they, they said that to the property line is as far as they could get. Running into roots right there.
Yeah, that's, Kevin and I talked about that today. As soon as he gets it exposed, I don't, we have a camera now.
Oh.
We're gonna come over and tammer it again and see just how far it is bad and where we need to work together with him to make it a good sewer line. No need to tie any of that in. It's, it's tore up now, so we'll go ahead and just.
Yeah.
I will contact him tomorrow.
And we, we decided to go ahead and take out all of, everything on our property line too and just put in new there to tie into whatever.
Yeah, I did talk to him. I got his number down there. We'll be, like I said, we'll be touching, give him off.
Okay, thank you.
So, other than that, that's all I got.
Okay. Roy, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Any old business?
I asked a question. Well, first off, Roy, yeah, now, here in this Midwest, they're out there working on that. Well, feel right now. They started that. How, how's it going?
They pulled, uh, eight, what, two weeks ago.
Yeah, I eventually brought that up last week. Okay. So it's going okay?
Yes, yes. You know, once it gets rebuilt, they'll bring that center one or set it. They'll probably pull a high service over next.
Yeah.
Inside the plant.
Well, all right. Seems like there's something else. Uh, what's the, uh, W Mac fella?
Bruce.
Bruce?
He wasn't able to.
I don't see him here. Okay, I'll say that question. Um, all right. Well, I don't understand your role, David, but did anybody have a chance to look at this, this, uh, thing? I think Brandy sent it out. They had a meeting for the, uh, West Side Square.
Yeah.
Was this just all electrical? Was there anything in there about, uh, anything else?
I think it was mainly the electrical. So.
Okay.
I don't think there's any issues there. Uh, I think John just wanted to keep us.
Up to date.
Up to date.
So they reached out to the county, didn't they?
Yeah, I think he's, yeah. They were wanting to set a meeting, weren't they, Doug? I mean, were you involved?
Yeah, we, we actually, part of this was Brett and I and Dan reaching out to Empa to make sure that we don't fall behind or get into a bind of not being able to get electric and, you know, it's not gonna be cheap and how, and figure out how the county is gonna get power to their tent with it all being underground. So just kind of get ahead of the game and, you know, with the, you guys are talking about other streets uptown. So, um, we wanted to kind of get something moving. So we're.
Well, that, that, that transformer, I guess they're gonna sit there on that and would be that, uh, southwest corner, right? That's what they're putting that. Uh, I'm just curious, how much load can that handle? Where, where? Well, what I'm thinking, okay, so I see a line proposed down the south side of the courthouse going, going east. Well, we need power all around that, that courthouse. Is that transformer gonna be big enough to maybe?
Um, I, I, I think in talking, there may have to be another one placed on the opposite side.
Uh, you mean down, the outside as in?
On the, uh, east side of the courthouse eventually, eventually, I believe, is my understanding.
So whenever we do a project on that street?
Yeah. And then I, a lot of the questions that my guy has, Brett and Dan, is, is once it's underground, you know, overhead's easy. We run it on top of the tent and loop it over, loop it over, you know, pull, pull. When it's underground, we're not gonna have that opportunity.
I thought they were putting some.
That's what we're.
The vent boxes?
Yes, the boxes. That's where we got to them and how, I mean, they're gonna be.
They'll run cords from the.
Basically, they should be able to do all that to their vent. It's, it's just a question we're trying.
I thought they were talking about like all four corners, maybe. Maybe not.
Yeah. These vent boxes will actually have to go just outside of the courthouse a little bit and then they'll run them. Yeah. Cords will run under the tent, along the inside of the, the tent and everything. So that's, that's what some of this was about. So we know what we're gonna have to do also. And then plus, the way some of this is gonna run, some of the shacks on this side will have to change the way they're electric.
Yeah.
And everything. So we're just trying to give them plenty of notice when this does happen.
Empa, had an Empa meeting. We could go today, here afternoon. Uh, you know, they gave them a quarterly update. I think they handed out that little handy dandy handout. So everybody, uh, so far, I think this, uh, what we got here, year to date, they've replaced, uh, somewhere, there are ten poles. Um, I think they've had one call for twenty twenty-four. What is that, twenty twenty-four stuff? Um, Chris, you just saw it, didn't you?
Mountain mill.
Yeah, there we are. There. Well, there's twenty-three.
Next page is.
Next page. Somewhere. But, uh, you know, no, no, no major news, nothing too exciting. Uh, yeah, there they are. Page six. Okay. Well, I'm missing page. My page six is different than yours.
Cause yours is not too sided.
Well, this page six is different than mine.
Why don't you just read that one?
Yeah. Maybe, I've got, you know what? I've got the fourth quarter report.
We're, we're gonna upgrade yours tomorrow.
You want me to read it?
I got the fourth quarter report. Basically, yeah, they've done ten poles so far. Uh, a couple of Beedale Road, Ohio, Howard Streets, uh, Silver, Voorhees, Jackson and, uh, Adams. The big project we're still working on, um, is getting three phase further out, replacing it out to Red Bud Hill, Topper Bud Hill. They haven't got the quote on that, but they're working on that. Um, so yeah, thanks, Chris.
Bottom line is our electric infrastructure's came a long way in the last.
No, it has.
Oh, yeah.
Our number of villages that go, yeah, that, that's in there.
Oh, yeah. You got a knowledge that's usually short.
Yeah, when I started here, if we got a report cast at ten mile an hour wind, we knew we were gonna be in there. I mean, it just was that way. Yeah, so.
Well, listen to this data. Well, what we got here, twenty twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, eighteen nineteen twenty-one, so there's fifty-nine power outages over, over a four-year period. Uh, seven twenty-two, one twenty-three. I mean, they're going down, um, every year. Of course, part of that's keeping up the vegetation and we, we are doing our own vegetation in-house now.
Yes.
Uh, but they're replacing poles is a big, big part of it too. But yeah, it, it's been, been a good program for us. Uh, well, under our business, I don't know, new business? I'll, I'll stop. I'm not sure if it's new or.
Sure. Have you got something? Let's do it.
Well, you stormwater board needing that and two of them, the other two are here. I think Steve, you probably want to, you wanna talk about what we talked, discussed or you want me to present it? How you wanna do that?
Either way, I mean, I think it's, it's no big secret. I mean, you know, but we've done what we can with the stormwater and with our funds. The Beetle Street project is gonna take care of a longstanding problem without avoiding routing additional water in, into Voorhees and, and Jackson Street, um, allowing it to, not to, not enter that area and make it a bigger mess. The next step of actually, um, taking care of the water within that area along the streets is gonna require tearing up the streets to put in storm sewers, just like you've seen on Howard and down on South Market. When you get into that, then it's okay. Now the streets tore open. What are you gonna do underneath? What's the condition of the sewer? The sanitary sewers have significant problems. So it becomes a bigger process and you've got old water piping. So at that point, to fix, really to do anything with the storm sewer, it becomes more than just financing storm sewer. It becomes a, another set of complete street projects and that's gonna require coordination, cooperation. I mean, Storm Board's not in charge of that or should be, but we gotta cooperate and the funding gets to be large. And to do that, you're gonna have to seek other outside sources to minimize the cost. And the two things that we've got are community crossings and OCA. And they have their peculiarities and they're different agencies. So you're gonna have to try and get those together simultaneously when the streets open. So it's gonna be a challenge and it's gonna require essentially board commitment that this is something the town needs to do. Comprehensive plan might provide another opportunity for us to get that and pay for the importance, but it gets to be probably a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns to do that. But the cost is just shoulder all the cost yourself. And Park's got some potential financing things mapped out. But again, it will take a lot of cooperation and you're gonna have to set a stake in the sand. Look, it's worth doing it for those thirty-five customers on Voorhees and twenty-five in Jackson. It's the center of town and they put up with a lot for a long time. So it's, it's ultimately gonna become a board project for the Storm Board to participate in on the side.
Right, right. Yeah, it, it's, uh, originally, I just looked at a storm and using a community crossing to do the streets, but there's no sense in doing the streets. You aren't gonna do the sewers. The sewers need replaced. And while you're there, you might as well get the water. I mean, you're going to be in the neighborhood and tow her up. You might as well do it all, do it right. So, so, yeah, you're looking at, uh, the stormwater's not a very, I mean, it's doable about any time for the town with the twelve, eighteen month plan. I mean, you're planning ahead for the next year. You're looking at about one point four eight million for both streets for Storm Street. Well, we have a P R, got a, a D S done, done the P R on that. So we know the cost. Uh, you know, be a community crossing. They can do it, you can go up to one point five million on a community crossing grant.
The spring's out, didn't it?
Yeah. So, so, you know, seventy-five percent be one point one million and we'd be about three and sixty-nine. So, so that's doable with existing funds. It's sewer that, that is, is scary because both, both, both streets are about one point nine million dollars and we went for an OCA, well, we have to go for an OCA grant. It's, and, and seven hundred thousand dollars you sell, one point two million have to finance. And, uh, yeah, that, that's, that's, uh, and then water's around four and fifty, maybe five hundred tops on that. Overall, the total projects for all of that's three point eight million. Um, but the sewer, the timing's a thing. Cause you have the community crossing, you have the OCA and, uh, you have to do the OCA first, do the sewer. You can't do anything, get sewer replaced. Be my mind, you wanna do that first. Wouldn't you agree, Luke? You do the sewer first?
Absolutely.
So then the question is, where do we fit into the OCA cycle? Because you have an issue of two, no more than two OCA grants at a time. One has to be closed before we can open up the, you know, that, that, the other one. Um.
I think it's more that it's the five, that period of time in between the sewer. I think your timing between closing the water and applying is.
Not as critical as the five-year thing. Yeah, you have, also have a five-year, what they do, if you have one in less than five years for the same utility department, they'll deduct, is it, I think, fifty points?
Fifty points.
From your application, cause it's a very competitive process. They score them based on points and all the kinds of different criteria. So we had a storm sewer storm back in twenty nineteen. I think we probably closed it in twenty twenty. Brandy's looking into that. So there's that issue there too. But we've got pretty much all engineering work done on, on both, for all this. Uh, just figuring out, okay, finance it and how that fits into our schedule. But so we, I worked with Cindy some and Brandy will come up with a plan on dates and, uh, present it here soon so we can, you know, get this on paper that this is our, our plan. And then it's just, what's up to the rest of you guys.
Well, I have two questions. One, Luke, was that engineered for gutters and catches and everything?
Yeah, it's got curbs, storm inlets. Realistically, when you get done with it, it'll, Christine.
The second question is, does it have to be done simultaneously or?
Well, you gotta do sewer first. And how soon can you get that community crossing out?
Well, what I'm asking is, I mean, we're gonna have to take it to Tulap Lane, right? I mean, it's gonna cross over to Tulap Lane. Is that still the plan?
Let's cross it. Stormwater is, yes.
So what my, my question is, would you do Voorhees first and then try to wrap Voorhees up and then do Jackson?
Do it all at once.
Or do it all at once?
Yeah, you can get the full seven hundred thousand and combine the sewer into one project. If you don't, you probably get five hundred, I think, on the, based on the, the amount of projects. They'll give you a little more if it's a bigger, I can't, I've got it somewhere here, I don't want to bore you with details. But yeah, you wanna do them both together.
Well, I was just thinking of the community crossings, cause we could go in the, like the first, you know, well, whichever one we went with, you know, that gives us basically a year, um, to get that, that blacktop done. So I'm just thinking out loud there, but.
Well, yeah.
We still got some figuring to do on that.
We still have some figuring to do, but we're, we're, we're further along than we have been. We have pretty good numbers. It's just getting in the financing cycle with OCA for the sewer and then the, uh, community crossing. Anything to add there, Steve? I think you covered it.
No, I think it's more of a commitment.
Yeah.
To do it. Um, a lot of unknowns, but one known is it just needs fixed.
I think the state in the sand that Steve mentioned was if you also, we do Voorhees and then six months after that project starts, so then something else comes up, something else comes up, we're kicking the can down the road, down the road.
Right, right.
So just get, get the commitment and, and go.
Because it's gonna take such a big chunk of the budget. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna dominate the budget when you do that. And it's, it's like, we're gonna do it and other things are gonna have to wait for a while.
Yeah, it's, uh, we've been collecting data for several years on that project and have it all now. And now it's just a matter of figuring out where to fit it into our, our funding.
And Doug, any other new business? I have one thing to mention. Um, Josh and I are trying to put a ride together for August. Um, I just want you guys thinking about, we may need some road closure. Don't know where or when yet, but just want you guys thinking about it.
Well, road closure as, expand.
Close the road so we can have bikes.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, yeah, like we've done before on Jefferson.
We've done it many times.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted you guys to be aware of it. Um, any, any public comment?
One thing. You, you got Josh Sorles. Um, he and I have been kinda talking. If you've noticed on, uh, his website or his Facebook, whatever, he's posting pictures of these Civil War veterans and give them back permission. You'd be amazed how many are in this cemetery and then also the county Revolutionary War, Indian Wars, Spanish American War. There's a Medal of Honor that are in this cemetery. Um, countless Civil War veterans in the whole county. Um, we're looking at, cause the brick thing kind of has trickled down a little bit, is it maybe putting together some sort of thing where a group like the Legion or VFW or AMVets or the Talisman adopts four or five of these, these, these Civil War veterans and gets a brick. You're talking about thirty, thirty-five bucks, um, with, uh, their name and perhaps the organization. So we'll get back to you on that. Uh, hopefully we, we're with Brandy on that. You get to get some more bricks out there.
Well, that's what this ride's about. It's, it's gonna be a veterans' ride. So, you know, we got big plans for it if it comes to, comes to it. So, so any other public comment?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think this could be a momentous occasion. Nobody asked for much.
Very strange. Good scare.